Stand for the Pledge Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to the July 7th County Commission meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cellphones. Meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender. If you need a listening device, Robert is in the front row and he would help you with that. That way we'll move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second. Any additions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the county commission meetings from June 30th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any corrections? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $318,685.51. Are there any additions? Or is there a motion? Start with a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any comments? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number four are reports. There are none. Item number five is personnel actions. A is consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions. Is there a motion?
There is.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second for routine personnel action. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item B is recognize significant employee anniversaries for July 2015. Carrie Deaver.
Good morning. Carrie Deaver from Human Resources. We have several people celebrating anniversaries in July. Celebrating five years of service, we have Stephen Millidge in the IT department and Julie Amdal in Human Services. Celebrating 10 is Joan Hall in the Sheriff's Office. Celebrating 15 is Jennifer Brendan in the Juvenile Detention Center. Jennifer Van Rokel in the Sheriff's Office and Teresa Dunn in Equalization. And then our large number for today is Brad Thomas in Equalization and he's celebrating 20 years of service this month.
Okay. Any deals in place here?
I don't believe we have any today.
I think they're all working, so, all right. Thank you. Item number C is recognize volunteers in the county departments for June 2015.
Another large month. 246 volunteers in 11 areas of county helping us out. It makes a big difference.
Yep. And there was an awful lot of volunteers out there working with the storm that we had a couple of weeks, too, that the names probably are not on the list. And we appreciate all their service, so.
Thank you.
Item number six is, thank you, Carrie. Item number six is applications for abatement. There are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. There are none. Item number eight is first reading of the amendment number 1504 to the 2001 Joint Zoning Ordinance for Minnehaha County and the City of Del Rapids to rezon property legally described as Lot 1 of Overidge Track 2, Southwest 1 Quarter, Section 8, Township 104, North Range 49 West, Minnehaha County, from C Commercial District to RR1 Rural Residential. Amendment number 15-04 will be considered at a public hearing at 9:00 a.m. on July 21st, 2015. David.
Morning, Commissioners. David Heinold, Planning Department. As you mentioned, the request is, it's located approximately one-half mile west of Del Rapids city limits on Highway 115 there, South Dakota Highway 115. This is a public hearing to the amendment of 2001 revised joint zoning ordinance for the City of Del Rapids and Minnehaha County to be held at 9:00 a.m. on July 21st. The notice publication would be published, scheduled to be published, and the publication for the Del Rapids Tribune tomorrow, in tomorrow's paper, for that meeting. The Planning Commission voted unanimously, both Planning Commissions, the city and the county, voted unanimously to recommend approval of rezoning 15.04. And we've provided you a map and a copy of those minutes to look through those. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Okay. This is just the first reading? And so if there's no questions, we'll move on.
Will this be done in a joint meeting with Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County and Del Rapids?
Yes.
Yes, Del Rapids.
Okay. Thank you, David. Item number nine is petition for a compromise of lien. Commissioner Barth.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The applicant in this case, DPNO 60818, the amount involved is $2,316. They represent public defender services in 2006 and '08 and human services provided once in 2015. The applicant has made a series of payments between $1 and $5 over the last nine years. Made one last week as well. I think I see 16 payments between a dollar, or eight of them were for a dollar. He's made partial payments, reducing it by $289. List assets of $30 in cash and checking. His primary income is social security at $9,756 a year. And he earned in 2014 $416. So he's asking for us to release the one part in full and, let's see here. He requests a compromise and release the lien full with no payment. He, when asked why he was submitting the application, he said, "Why not?" And I guess I would ask if the applicant might be present? And if he is, he may make a statement from where he is without identifying himself, without standing up or whatever.
Did you want to make any comments? You just have to speak loudly, please.
Do you have a copy of the?
Yes. We have a copy of everything.
Do I think any names prior to the top of the form?
You've made payments, quite a few payments, over the years.
Your first payment was in 2006.
Yeah. Okay. Either way, yeah, I just, the money that, there was a $1,700.
Charge against you?
Yeah.
Yeah?
That money, did you guys receive, pay that money already here?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, it's already paid. No, it's already paid.
No, that's the bill for a public defender in 2008.
They had received that money then?
Yes.
Well, they're our own employees. They charge you for their services.
Yeah.
Just like hiring a lawyer outside, our own attorneys charge for services for indigent clients. I think we charge a lesser rate, as a matter of fact, than outside attorneys.
There's some payments, like a hundred, a couple hundred dollar payments.
There are $200 payments and, and there are many, many other payments.
So, yeah, you pay a hundred dollars, a hundred dollars, $202. It sounds like they're down to a dollar after that.
Yeah. So do you have anything else you want to say about it?
I guess I'll let you guys proceed.
Okay. Well, I guess if I may, Madam Chair, I would encourage you to continue to make payments, even small payments, because we do find that to be indicative of good faith on your part. And we've had many people that have made no payments and suddenly ask for relief. And in your case, to your credit, you have made some of those payments. And, you know, even at a small amount, it is encouraging to get that. And I would encourage you to keep doing it. But personally, I'm not ready to support forgiving the rest of this at this point. Okay? Well, I'm going to make a motion to deny at this moment.
A motion to deny. Is there a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second to deny. Are there any other comments? I, too, would like to say appreciate the fact that you are consistent in making payments. And even though you're not close to paying this off yet, he's paid 11%. And I think you just keep working at it and maybe we'll see you back in the future, so.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second to deny at this point. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next one is opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here that would like to speak about anything that is not on the agenda. We'll move on with regular business. Number 10 is a public hearing to consider the 2015 Annual JAG Joint Spending Plan for Minnehaha County and the City of Sioux Falls. Kristin Trana. Good morning, Kristin.
Good morning. A few weeks ago, we brought to you the spending plan. And today, it's a public hearing as far as if any would be any opponents to what we've planned to spend the JAG funds on. Just to recap, what we have chosen, the spending plan is, it's a 35%, 65% split between the city PD and the Sioux Falls, or, excuse me, the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. And so the 35% that the Sheriff's Office would like to spend is on tasers and equipment that go with tasers. And the PD is planning on purchasing tablets and vest carriers.
Okay. Are there any questions for Kristin? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else that wants to speak as a proponent in favor of this project? Is there anyone who wants to speak against this project? Okay. Seeing none, I would look for a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Kristin. Item number 11 is consider a bid award for the DVR recording system for Minnehaha County Jail. Bids were opened on June 17th. Good morning.
Good morning. Robert Wilson, Sheriff's Office. We have received three bids for the replacement of our pretty antiquated digital video recording system. We had one that came in under our budgeted allotment. The others were quite a ways over. The one that did come in under our budget meets all of our requirements and they've actually exceeded them. So that company is a local company, safe and secure, and we'd like to extend that reward to them.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
I'll move to accept the bid.
A motion and a second?
Second. I would ask a question.
Commissioner Barth.
Inasmuch as it is considerably smaller than the others, you're confident that they can perform on this contract?
Yes, sir. And I asked them why they were able to come in so much lower. They do not pay for a third-party vendor for software. They do their own. And we did see a demonstration of it and it was actually pretty impressive.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second to approve the recording system for Minnehaha County Jail. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number 12 is consider a motion to extend ISS Facilities Services Agreement with Minnehaha County to include a portion of the Health and Human Services Building. Mark Creer.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Mark Creer, Facilities Department. As the memo states, we would like to extend the contract with ISS Facilities rather than filling an open custodial position. This would save the county $19,894.58 a year. Is there any questions for me?
I have a specific wording for a motion, just because we need to have two parts of that when you're to that point. I would read the motion for you.
Read my motion for me.
Okay. A motion to approve extending the ISS Facilities Services Incorporated contract to include a portion for the Health and Human Services Building at a cost of $19,200 and authorize the use of personnel savings in the facility's budget to pay for the extended contract service.
That's my motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Barth and a second by Commissioner Kelly. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Item number 13 is a briefing on the building permit fee increase proposed by Planning and Zoning. Scott Anderson, good morning, Scott.
Good morning, Scott Anderson, County Planning. Today I brought, I have before you, a briefing memo. As you know, part of the duties of my office is to issue building permits and we charge a fee for those building permits. Periodically, we revisit the amount that we charge for those building permit fees. And the way the county building permit fees are issued is, we have a rate of calculation that we use to determine that we calculate square footage of buildings on. And then we take that square footage and we take it, multiply it times a set dollar amount. And then that gives us the overall valuation of that building. And then for residential construction, it's 0.4% of that rate and that's your building permit fee. I will tell you that periodically, we increase these. We last increased the fees in 2013 and they went up 3% at, oh, sorry, 1% in 2013. And two years prior to that, in 2011, they went up 3%. The rate that I am proposing to increase the fees for the building permit calculations by is 3.5. I worked with the Auditor's Office and they have provided me with the Consumer Price Index, which sort of we use to peg the fees on or the rate of increase. The CPI went up 2.1 in 2013 and 1.4% in 2014. And if you add these together, it's 3.5%. And that's what I'm proposing for the rate that we use to calculate the square footage valuation of structures in Minnehaha County. I did provide you with an example of what the cost of a 1,500-square-foot house with an unfinished basement and attached double-stall garage would be. The current valuation would be, it would be $186,057 for that structure. And the proposed valuation would increase that building permit or the valuation of that structure to about $195,659, which would result in an increase of a building permit fee of $26.76. I will also note for the public and for the commission and people in the audience that industrial, commercial buildings, they pay a flat 1% rate. We're not proposing any increase for those structures, for those building permits. They will continue to pay the 1% rate. And agricultural structures pay slightly less. They pay a 0.3% rate. So there is a little bit of a break there. I have provided this information to the Home Builders Association and I've contacted them. I work closely with them to make sure that they are aware and informed of upcoming proposed fees. They contacted me and said that they would be taking it to their executive board and they are meeting sometime this week. And they would let us know if they had any concern. My intent for today is just to provide you this information. This is adopted by resolution. And so next week, we could, I'll bring it back to you and you could adopt the resolution amending the calculation rate for structures in Minnehaha County. I have also posted this on our internet site, so you can look at the property or look at the proposed changes on the internet. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. And this is just for your information today.
If this was passed, September 1st would be the implementation date?
Yes, exactly. And one of the reasons I push it out that far is because you do have people that are bidding projects or in the process of preparing bids. And this gives them time to include the increase.
Are there any questions for Scott? Okay. This was just a briefing, so we will see you back next week. Thank you, Scott. Item number 14 is a briefing on amendments to the Minnehaha County Drainage Ordinance proposed by Planning and Zoning.
Thank you. Once again, Scott Anderson, Minnehaha County Planning Department. And another one of our illustrious tasks is working with drainage permits, as you all are aware. And we have a drainage ordinance which was adopted in 2010. And I am proposing some slight amendments to that ordinance, primarily dealing with the addition of two named creeks. And I'll put that on your.
We have nothing in the screen in front of us, Robert.
It's a little dark.
We do. Our screen's disappeared.
It's just flat.
It's just hot.
Yeah.
Today's also a briefing memo. And I'll give you the background while we get the screen up and running. But earlier this year, the USGS added a new creek to the list of named creeks in the county. And there was quite a process. You may recall that there was, last year, a lot of names solicited for the proposed creek. And the USGS adopted the name Annie Anderson Creek. This flows into, I think, Beaver Creek, which is just by Valley Springs. While we were doing our research, we realized that there was also a creek that was already named by USGS, which was not listed in our ordinance, and that's Buffalo Creek. And that's a very short section of a small creek that's the outflow of Buffalo Lake, which is north of Humboldt. So I'm, we need to amend the ordinance to include these two named creeks. And that is a benefit to people that are doing drainage because it allows them to connect into the named creek. There's also a small change in Section 107. There was a misspelling of the word maintenance. We're correcting that. And then, at the request of the state's attorney, we are revising the way that we conduct the mailing notices for projects. Our current ordinance sometimes requires certified mailing, sometimes it requires mailing by first-class mail. And the state's attorney has advised us or recommended strongly that we change that over to everyone having to mail out by certified mail. And then there is a record of that attempt to contact the property owners. And lastly, we are giving a title to Section 4, which I think was just an omission when we set up the ordinance in 2010 because it really deals with intermittent streams. And that just is clarifying that, that Section 4 of Section 107 is, really deals with intermittent streams. So there's a title. And once again, any work that's done in an intermittent stream, there'd be a requirement that the downstream, the downstream property owners are notified by certified mail. So this is a briefing memo. I'd be glad to ask or answer any questions that you have. And I'd be bringing this back next week to you. We'd be setting a formal hearing date for August 11th. And then that would give me time to send the hearing notices to the three official papers of the county.
Okay. Are there any questions?
And once again, also, excuse me, I have put this on, there's a, this information, the map, the changes to the amendment, and the hearing notice have all been added to our county website and for the public to look at. I have already received a couple of calls from drainage installers and they're very supportive of the idea of adding the named creeks.
And the effective date is not, we don't know yet, just because we haven't moved forward?
The effective date would, we'd sort of have to, there'd be the hearing in front of the county commission, then we, then the auditor publishes the minutes and it's effective 20 days after the publication of those minutes.
Okay.
I would suppose it would be sometime in October.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Scott on this briefing? Okay. Seeing none, we'll see you next week.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Madam Chair, if I might just make a small comment on that Buffalo Creek location. You know, when you look at the map, it looks like it's coming into the lake, but it's actually an outflow. And we had a complaint on a drainage project up that way from the Game Fish and Parks. And when I went out there and looked, there's actually a dam on the outflow of that lake controlled by the Game Fish and Parks and they control the level of the lake. And their complaint was that adding the tile was going to raise the lake and make it bad for ducks because it would flood the marshlands. But they, in fact, controlled that lake and we wouldn't have known that just looking at the map because it looks like it's flowing in. But it's actually flowing out to the north in that particular location.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Item number 15 is a consider a motion to authorize the Sioux Empire Fair Association to accept donations of a new livestock office building. We've been asked to defer this for a week.
Motion to defer.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to defer for one week. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 16 is possible consideration of a resolution for opt-out by Minnehaha County from the Property Tax Limitation Statute, starting with the calendar year 2015, payable in 2016. Note that the budget hearing is scheduled for 6:00 p.m. on July 6th, 2015. Robert Wilson.
Morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson with the Commission Office. As you know, if you plan to opt-out as part of your process for determining and setting up the 2016 budget, if an opt-out is going to be part of that, you need to pass that resolution by, with a minimum of five commissioners by the 15th of July. At your budget hearing on July 30th, the Commission Office was asked to schedule this item for today's commission meeting to give you the opportunity to consider that, debate that. And if you would like to, to set an amount and a length of time for an opt-out resolution that would be part of the 2016 budget. I know from your discussions at the budget hearing, both on the 30th and last night, that that, I believe there's some more discussion that you may want to have on that today. You may want to hear some more information from the Auditor's Office as well as possibly others. But I bring that forward for your consideration.
Okay. Thank you. Comments? I guess I could start out. We did have a budget hearing last night and discussed, we have cut and cut and cut and cut. I think they told us the nuclear cut, which we cut back farther than some of our departments have been in a couple of years. And we are still short finances going forward to operate in 2016. So that's why this is on the agenda today. We have to have four or five commissioners agree to move forward. Whatever amount we opt-out for today does not necessarily mean that's the amount of money that we would be using when we finalize the budget in September. We are still in the process of working on this budget. We have to make a decision about the opt-out before the middle of July. And I'm going to be gone before that could be voted on again and would put an extra burden on the four commissioners that are here. We decided we wanted to have five available to vote on this. So that is the reason it's on today. So I would look for something from my.
Are you going to do a motion? I have some discussion first.
We can do whatever you want to do.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth.
I think that we should have some discussion. And I guess, I wonder if the auditor and his staff have come up with a recommendation and if they might share it with us. I mean, they certainly have studied the numbers as hard as anybody. Maybe they don't at this time, but I, you know.
Even if they don't have a recommendation is at least where we're at at this point.
Sure.
And we are not completed with this budget. So I want that, these are still preliminary numbers, more or less.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Adamson from the Auditor's Office. As you recall, we have reviewed an analysis of, reviewed multiple variations of an analysis leading us to where our budget shortfall, what our true budget shortfall is. And based on the discussions we had last night in the budget hearing, we are sitting at this position. This analysis was reviewed with you back on June 30th. It shows that so far throughout the budget hearings, we have made adjustments to revenue that net to an increase in revenue of $89,000. We have adopted adjustments to expenditures of $1.9 million. If we calculate the impact to cash applied, which is basically our shortfall within the budget, we have decreased our cash applied needs by $2,072,000. And at the very bottom of the page, we started on June 9th with a cash applied figure of $7.7 million. We've reduced it by the $2 million. We're now sitting at a cash applied balance of $5.6 million. Historically, over the last three. Historically, over the last three years, we have used a cash applied figure ranging from $2 million to $3.4 million. Also, in the last three budget years, we have not utilized any of that cash applied because we've been able to finish the fiscal year with a surplus position. In 2014, our surplus for the year was $669,000. Auditor Litz had recommended in previous meetings that we try to budget to a cash applied figure of about $4 million. I do believe that that would be a manageable level, which leaves us still with a shortfall of $2.6 million based on our current projections.
Okay. Thank you, Kim. Any questions for Kim?
You meant 1.6, right? Not 2.6?
1.6, I'm sorry, yes.
Commissioner Bender.
Can I just have a question about, so we know where we are this year, and I apologize because I kind of asked the same question last night. I just am hoping maybe there's a different answer. Do you have any feeling going forward into the next budget cycle, whether there's any reason to believe outside something that, you know, legislation that comes out of PIR that we would be in a different financial position? If we just covered the shortfall for this year and did not increase taxes at all, is there any reason to think that we won't be in a shortfall position in the next year or two going forward?
There really is not, because there's really no indication that the growth in our tax levy is going to accelerate any further than it has year to year. When you look at our operating expenses, salaries and benefits, are about 67% of the expenditure budget in the general fund. If we just move everybody on the current salary matrix, that alone is a 2.5% increase to our expenditures without any other growth in any other area of our budget. So we don't see any relief in the near future to this condition.
Thank you. Any other questions for Kim? Comments? Questions for anyone else?
I got a comment.
Commissioner Kelly?
The opt-out, when, back in the 90s, when the tax reduction deal was put into effect, the opt-out was our only local control on this thing, because everything we do is pretty well mandated by the state as far as what we have to do and what we can do to collect revenue for our general taxes. The restrictions on what our revenues can become are very tight. They've used CPIs of 1.5, 1, I think one year we had 0.
Yeah.
You know, and in all reality, I think all of us know that those numbers don't really reflect what the cost of doing business is for us. I mean, we see our contracts continually going up at 3%, 3.5%. Our supplies, things like that. The public understands, you know, that the highway bill last year threw some more money at us, as did the change in recording fees the year, or two years before, I believe. But the highway money, we have to remember, is strictly to be spent on roads and bridges. Very, very restrictive. And so it has not helped us at all. For our public safety costs have gotten up to 254% of our total budget. Of our general tax budget, it's probably been more like 65%. And those costs, we saw it this year with the requests of public defender, of the state's attorney, of the public advocate, of the jail, and the needs, we're all familiar with the needs we have there. We need to have some help from PIR. And there is summer study going on. Hopefully, it'll come up with something. But we need some other ability to either enhance our revenues, to get distribution of revenues changed, where it's allocated. And we've been unsuccessful pretty much in that in the past. I would, my goal would be to keep the opt-out as low as possible. I think within that $2.5 million mark. We do not have to spend it, as you mentioned. But I believe today is the day we set the maximum number. And I know there's some other, you know, there's pressure for 3 and 4 million dollar opt-outs and then not using it, obviously, if we don't have to. But I, my hope is that we can do it at $2.5 million and use what we have to on this. We've got another two months to really, really tighten down anything else in the budget. It's made some very, very significant changes to a lot of the departments. These were the increases we're talking about, not the overall spending. But obviously, there was a $7.5 million increase, requests going into the budget. We've done as much work as we think we can do. Thank you.
Additional comments?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth.
You know, clearly, we function under the property tax limitation of 3% or the rate of inflation, whichever is lower. And that does not take into account what our actual costs are. So for example, when we have, you know, a 40% increase in felony crime over a couple of years, when we have, you know, even the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court had us do a 3.5% raise for outside attorneys that we hire, those costs are not reflected in the 1.4% rate increase we're allowed under the property tax limitation. And yes, we can make additional cuts, and yes, we can reduce our services to our citizens. You know, I remember saying to my boss when I worked at the phone company, I can reduce customer service without any additional training. Think how lucky we are when we can do stuff like that without any additional money, without any additional training. I don't believe the citizens of our county want to have reduced services. I think we want better services. You know, as we go forward with our population and with the issues that increasing population and diversity bring, we need more resources, not less. If we're going to take care of people outside of jail who have mental and addiction issues, that's going to take more resources, not less. We can't just build warehouses and put people in them. We have to start serving the people. And I think, I like what Dick had to say. But I think that we, you know, we do have the option of opting out for a number greater than what we anticipate spending. The school district did that a couple of years ago, and then when the state cut aid to education, they took more of their authorized opt-out monies. And I'm not sure what that exact number is, but I think that it's clear that we shouldn't try to get through this with the bare bones thing and then try to cut more meat between now and the end of October.
Thank you. Additional comments?
Why are you looking at me?
I looked at Jean, and she looked at you.
Are you ready for a motion?
I don't know. I don't know if we're done with comments yet. Sheriff has a comment. We'll let him.
Morning, Commissioners. Commissioner Heiburger, you said it early on in this process, and that is that you cut and you cut and you cut to get to this level. And I just want to stand here in support of an opt-out. It's not popular, but the reality is, it's the only mechanism we currently have. And Commissioner Kelly brought up, we need help from PIR, and we've gone there year after year after year. And this year, fortunately, there was, or last year, there was some good help for our highways and bridges. And maybe this summer study will come out with something that better benefits the funding mechanism to support this. But when we listen to, when I listen to what goes on with the city's budget and their ability to do what they're able to do, and then I listen to the budget process that we've been going through for several months now, it's hard to believe we live in the same community. And unfortunately for us, we're on the, we're kind of on the losing end of the revenue that comes in based on taxes in our community. But public safety, essential services, that's what county government is. And this budget that you're talking about opting out for, remember, you've already cut well over $1 million out of requests that department heads feel that they need to meet, whether that's more attorneys for the state's attorney, or the public defender, public advocate, you know, additional jail staff. All those things you had to cut just to get to this level where you can opt-out. So I hope that when you do opt-out, that you at least consider, at least for, you know, what are we gonna, I like what Commissioner Bender said, what about next year? Because there's not any, you know, bright, optimistic view that next year is going to be a lot better. So hopefully, we don't have to opt-out again next year, and that you're able to opt-out for enough. But I just want to stand in support of, that's the mechanism available to the counties. It's unfortunate that we're in the financial position that we are. But this is a very lean budget. You've cut a lot from a lot of departments. And this is, when I came to you and when the other department heads came to you, for the most part, you know, I think it was a needs budget request, not a wants budget request. And you still had to make tough cuts to that. So I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Sheriff. Mr. McGowan.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Aaron McGowan, Minnehaha County State's Attorney. I would just like to echo what the sheriff said. We've cut to the bone. You know, we've been doing that since I became a state's attorney. I agree with Commissioner Barth, we can't control outside factors. We have had a 50% increase in felony offenses in the last five years. Those are the UJS numbers. My office is appearing on 250 adult criminal cases today alone. We made 52,000 court appearances last year. These are the most serious and complex cases. The city can afford more police officers. They are making more arrests. They're very aggressive and very appropriate. But once that arrest is effectuated, the cost shifts to the county. We pay for the jail to house them. We pay for the prosecution costs. We paid, I think, close to $5 million in indigent defense last year. Those are statutory obligations. We don't have a choice in that. There are lots of statutory obligations towards the county, and we can't absorb that growth. We've been doing more with less year after year after year. Like the sheriff said, we are not asking for anything we want. We are asking for what we absolutely need for a responsible level of services. So I appreciate your courage to consider an opt-out. It's not an easy thing to do, but it's absolutely the right thing to do. And I would also ask that you opt-out for an amount that doesn't put us in the same position next year. Thank you all.
Are there any other department heads or people that would like to comment? I think we've heard a lot of comments. Appreciate that, Aaron. I also am on the, kind of the same page, I believe, as Commissioner Bender, that I don't think it makes a lot of sense to opt-out enough for one year and be back here again next year. I think that we will continue to look for where we can cut, or where we might need to add back in again in the budget that we've been working on. We do have till a preliminary budget due the end of July, and then a final budget the end of September. Whatever, if we would opt-out for a number, like Commissioner Bar said, we don't necessarily have to use that whole amount this year. It could be just not taxed in this coming year. And if we needed it, like the school district did, we could dip into that in future years without having to come back to the table and do this again. Any other questions?
Hello, motion?
Can we, Commissioner Bender, reply first?
The only comment that I'd like to make, not to kind of continue to beat a dead horse, I mean, through this budget process, I've been completely convinced that this county has operated on less than it's needed for a number of years. And I think that commissioners sitting here who have a lot more experience than I have have done a very good job, have been, have proven themselves to be good stewards of the citizens' tax money. I don't think citizens want us to come back and do an opt-out year after year. And the history, if you look at it, is that the opt-outs have come with increasing frequency because of the needs that have been expressed here. Where I struggle is to know where the number is. I don't know where the number is. It's somewhere above 1.7. I just, I'm not exactly sure what's responsible. I agree with Commissioner Kelly that taxpayers look a bit askance at people who, there is a tendency to think that if you have it, you will spend it. But I think that there is a history here that that isn't necessarily the case, that we've been very, as a county, very responsible with the funds that we've been given. And so I agree with Commissioner Heiburger. I would prefer to see us opt-out at a level that allows us to take what is absolutely needed for three years at least, so that we aren't necessarily back here, and then give the legislature some time to really study this issue, hopefully recognize the need, and come up with a different funding mechanism that addresses the needs that we have.
I have one more comment, and I think probably most of the people in this room have heard it just because they've said it before. And it's not, it's not that we're not taxed enough. It's that there's a distribution problem. When you've got part of us starving and part of us having additional cash, there's a problem here. And I think it's all, I mean, I know it all comes out of the same pocket. Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I'd thrown out $2.5 million before, but in the spirit of compromise, maybe, I would make a motion to opt-out for $3 million.
Is there a second to 3? Is there a second? Motion dies for a lack of a second. Is there an additional number?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth.
I would make a motion to opt-out for $3.5 million. And if I get a second, I would just make one additional comment.
I have a motion for $3.5 million. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Commissioner?
You know, we've been working with our, the city, Lincoln County, to find ways of getting things done for less and to cooperate. We're looking at doing some things with our A&amp;M business to do things for less. It's possible we will be finding some ways of getting things done more economically. And I hope that those efforts and cooperation can continue. I also think that we cannot go through this process again next year. And my hope would be that, you know, this could get us through several years. And I would separately, after we vote on this, maybe make a term of how long the opt-out would be. But right now, I'm just going with the idea that it should be $3.5 million.
Okay. Any other comments?
I believe we do have to put a term on it.
Yeah, we do.
We do.
We have a motion on the table for 3.5. I personally would like to see us at 4. I think that we need to make it a little farther down the road.
Do we have a second?
Throw that out there.
Well, Madam Chair, I guess, hearing this, words of wisdom, I withdraw my motion and remake one for $4 million.
Is there a second for a $4 million?
I wonder if Commissioner Bender needs to withdraw her second as well. I'm not sure.
She doesn't, you don't have, she doesn't have to. Is there a motion, is there a second on the $4 million? There is not. Did you want to reinstate?
Yeah, I'll go back to 3.5.
We have a motion for 3.5 million. Are there any other comments or additions? Okay. I think we'll have a real call. Oh, excuse me. Commissioner Benega.
I was going to be quiet for a change, but I guess I might as well screw this up even more. I frankly don't like the fact that we have to do it for more than a year, but I'll be honest, I don't think even 3.5 is going to be the right number for two years, because we'll see a growth in the future that's going to be more than the 1.5 or 2% that we get in the following year when we try to keep the staff that we have with the growth of the criminal justice system, if you will, and the cost of doing business where we're getting a significant amount of the negative part of government, if you will, and that does continue to grow. The only answer to this system is that the system needs to be changed. And the sales tax revenue that's generated by the state and the city, they're benefiting that because of the fact that they've been able to create cash reserves that are significant for them. And we have not been able to do that because, frankly, our growth is the same amount as their growth, but we don't have the revenue source. I think it was shown to us, I don't remember how long ago, but for 10 years, the state's average growth turned out to be exactly what the county's growth was, within just a 10th of a percent or something like that, over a 10-year period of time. But our revenue sources were significantly less than the state's. I don't remember the exact amount, so I don't want to state that. I don't remember the exact amount, so I don't want to state that publicly. But if we would have got the same amount that the state would have gotten, frankly, we wouldn't have to opt out, if I remember right.
That's right.
That's the problem. And the problem is not going to go away unless some people take responsibility of making the system equitable for everybody. And I'm still amazed that people don't pay more attention until we get to this point. But frankly, I think we've done what we've needed to do and maybe even done it a little further than we needed. But I don't think we have a choice but to opt out. And I do have some concerns about 3.5 because I don't think that, for next year, is going to be enough.
I'm going to jump onto that choir again just because 3.5, if we're already, where we're at short, we're short 1.7 already right now. You take 1.7 out of there, and we're not even done with our budget. And there are some things we have not addressed yet. You got less than $2 million for next year. So, and maybe $2 million is enough next year. But I doubt it, as costs continue to rise, that $2 million is going to cover next year.
Ken, I hate to do this to you when you're semi-retired, but would you recall for us what your graph showed for that 10-year period of time? Do you remember that off the top of your head or not? If any remembers. Probably don't we remember?
I'll probably remember.
Yeah. What we did was to show what the growth of revenues had been during that same 10-year period. And we did a combination between what the county is seeing relative to the property tax limitation, you know, and how that had limited our growth, and then what the growth in the sales tax numbers had been for both the state and the city. And it was very interesting that both the state and the city, and if I remember the spreadsheet correctly, we did it a year or two ago, and that was almost a 43% increase during that time period in that of revenues that they had seen. For the county, it ended up being close to 29%. So there was a huge discrepancy there between the revenues that were generated between the two county governments. Between the, all the levels of government.
Thank you.
I do have one more comment in that we do need, had to have, the motion has to have the length of years and the amount in the same motion.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So wherever we are, we have to have them both together, so.
I would, I guess I'll make the motion, but do one of my colleagues have a term that they would recommend? Otherwise, I'll wing it. Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Make a motion for $3.5 million for 25 years.
Okay. Have a motion for $3.5 million for 25 years. Did we withdraw the motion we had before?
I will do that.
Okay, that motion has been withdrawn. And we have a new motion on the table for 3.5 for 25 years. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for 3.5 for 25 years. Comments? No comments.
Commissioner Barth?
You know, we did have a bill recommended to the legislature to change the property tax limitation from the rate of inflation, or 3%, whichever is less, to whichever is greater. And if we had opted out for the difference last year between the 1.4% we were allowed and the full 3%, I think we would have gained a couple hundred thousand dollars. And if we would make those incremental opt-outs to keep up with things, I think it becomes less of a one-time, large hit. And I think we should try to renew that with the legislature, whichever is greater bill.
Additional comments? I have a motion for 3.5 million opt-out with a term of 25 years. Again, we don't have to use the full 3.5 going forward. We can use what we need and leave the rest untaxed. Any other comments or questions? We're going to do a real call vote.
Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Yes. Motion passed as 5 to 0. Excuse me. Item number 17 is Minnetonka County Commission Liaison Reports. Are there any liaison reports? Seeing none, is there any new business? Robert, oh, Commissioner?
I'd just like to make a comment to the staff. We've talked about the department heads and how hard they've worked, but the auditor's office and Kim and Darlene and, I don't see Rich. He probably quit. He's in the back.
He's in the back.
The amount of time that you guys put together to make this thing happen and all the changes that we've gone through in the last, I don't know, seems like forever, but it's been a month or so. We appreciate your support because frankly, we can't do our jobs without good information. And you guys provide us with great information. And you work hard at that, and I appreciate all that support. I don't know if that's old business or new.
Yeah, that's been going on and on and on for years and years. So we do appreciate our staff. And they did come in with a very tight budget, and we still continue to cut, so. Is there any old business? Robert, did you have some legislative, South Dakota Association stuff you wanted to brief us on?
I was just going to mention to you that next week, we will be bringing a, excuse me, an agenda item forward for your consideration, which would be a discussion of legislative priorities that you would like to consider and put forward to consideration by the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners for inclusion in their legislative platform. You have to make a decision and approve those in the form of a resolution by the end of July for submission to the association. And then those all submitted resolutions are considered by the full association at the statewide conference in September. And the ones that are approved by the full association become part of the SDACC legislative package and platform in January. So again, next week, we will do this in essentially a two-stage process and schedule a discussion of potential legislative resolutions next week. And then follow that up with another agenda item on the last Tuesday of July to actually make a decision on which of the potential resolutions you want to approve and forward to the association for inclusion in the association's platform.
Okay. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I just would comment that if anyone in the staff or any other elected officials have any issues that need to go to peer, I would urge them to be in contact with Robert and bring them to us.
Any other old business? Okay. I look for a motion to adjourn into executive session for personnel.
That's my motion.
Second. A second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.